I appreciate that.
Jill O'Hara, English Division. Mary Erin Crook will distribute packets to each of the board members. Dear members of the Pasadena City College Board of Trustees, tonight you'll be hearing a series of letters written by Pasadena City College faculty members explaining why each of them chose to support a vote of no confidence in President Mark W. Rocha. These letters are written in direct response to some individual board members and President Rocha's public comments dismissing the significance of this historic vote by PCC faculty members. We hope that this sampling of powerful letters written by concerned faculty will allow you, the board members, to perceive a truthful portrait of the far-reaching and complex disturbances that trouble this campus under the leadership of President Rocha. We hope that each of you will respect the theory in which these letters were written to inform each of you and to enable you to better comprehend the profound dimensions of this college crisis. Here is the first of the letters. Dear members of the board, two brief points for consideration. Number one, the controversy at PCC is erroneously focused on the cancellation of winter session. The controversy should be focused on Dr. Rocha's management methods and the ongoing best interests of the college. I do not teach winter session and pedagogically I prefer our current schedule without the winter term. I am however convinced that Dr. Rocha should be removed from his position for the sake of the college. Number two, last year the faculty of the University of Southern Maine held a vote of no confidence in their president. The majority of the faculty voted for no confidence, but the tally came short and the two-thirds majority needed to forcibly remove the president from her office. In the aftermath of this vote, the chancellor of the University of Maine system recognized that the faculty's lack of confidence in the president was untenable and so transferred the president to a different job in the chancellor's office. What's more, the president willingly made the move, recognizing as the chancellor did, that remaining in the presidency would not be in the best interest of the college. I hope that the PCC Board of Trustees will conclude, as the chancellor of the University of Maine did, that a college with deep divisions between the faculty and the administration will not succeed as a whole. Unfortunately, Dr. Rocha's management style is so alienated, many of the faculty and students of PCC, that his continued service as the president of Pasadena City College will only propagate and exacerbate the deep division of broken communication that is so detrimental to a successful college. For the sake of the college, I urge you to remove him from his office as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time, Dr. Daniel Cole. And thank you all very much for listening. Dan? Is Dan Meyer here?
Dan, is there a people in your time? Don, under.
Lauren Parkinson?
Uh, Lauren must have stepped out. What is she?
Pat Rose.
Because we do it just slowly.
Is Pat here? Please be close by, please.
Good evening. These words that I'm about to read come directly from me and I felt that it was very important that I stand here and that you recognize the person who is speaking this. I also want you to know that I did not take this statement or what I'm about to write lightly. I want to congratulate the faculty that did some wonderful work with the SASE. I also want you to know that there are two sides to every story and I'd like to share another perspective with you. Lastly, I'd like to also speak not only for myself, but for my colleagues who are afraid to come up here to speak, that the retaliation that they feel is so strong that they're not capable of speaking their voice. And I want you to know that I am representing them as well. So this is directly to those of you on the Board of Trustees. Many of my colleagues are hurt and astounded by your lack of understanding about what we do on this campus each and every day. Your faculty is responsible for the education of our so important student body. That includes class lectures, grading assignments, hours of preparation, and the modeling of positive behavior. Each time a student acts in an inappropriate manner, I immediately reflect upon the horrific examples that had been played before then by the campus administrators. Students have been exposed to inappropriate examples of lies, deceit, and false claims from those administrators on this campus. Students have been asked to believe that their classes have been cut due to faculty salaries. The community has led to believe that the faculty is greedy. We've been told in newspapers and on campus that we're selfish and that we're out for nothing but personal gain. That smoke and mirror techniques are nothing more than forms of propaganda to hide the lack of performance on the part of your administrators. Rather than dwelling on these negative facts, I want to thank each of you on this board personally for this specific growth opportunity that you've given to me. I have learned that my students and I can persevere in an environment that promotes divisiveness rather than student success. My colleagues and myself have formed lasting relationships that your administration will never, ever be able to break, regardless of the amount of power that you decide to give to only a few. I feel a sense of solidarity toward members of other unions and a lasting commitment to support each and every one of their causes. And lastly, I'm proud to say I'm now working with faculty from other campuses that were previously victimized by Rocha's poor leadership.
Thirty seconds.
As I teach, my students strive to find the positive in all of your educational endeavors. As members of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena City College, by supporting the current direction of the administration, you have chosen to support dishonesty. Yet in a similar manner to my students, I will continue to model positive behavior that which promotes solidarity and success. The more that you promote an environment that fosters harassment, the more bonding you'll see.
Your time is up.
Perfect timing. Thank you for your time.
So following Pat Rose, we'll have Manny Correa.
Well, I am reading another letter tonight from a full-time faculty member, but this faculty wishes to remain anonymous because, well, she was afraid to sign my name. And I've also admitted her letter, so other people can't have more time to speak. So I submitted my vote of no confidence in PCC's administration and President Rocha for none of the reasons the board supposes. I have never taught winter or summer courses, and your open letter to all of us was naive at best. I am greatly saddened that I even have to write this letter because it means that the board is sorely out of touch with PCC. And with its constituents' voices and opinion, it resorts to disbelief or tries to shrug it off. It also pains me to admit that I'm a coward. I struggled with the issue of signing this letter and decided against it. Why? Because I need to keep my job and I need not find myself in the snake pit of that PCC's governance has become. I fear you, dear board, and the vote Dr. Rocha has been allowed to build. I believe that all divisions, departments, and individuals have their own concerns and problems. Here are mine. The lack of transparency and communication, the complete lack of faculty input on pedagogical matters. Now here are a few examples of transparency and communication problems. Who from the faculty and students participated in the president's performance review? Perhaps if the board had asked these constituents, Dr. Rocha wouldn't have received such high marks and the board would be so shocked in the vote of no confidence. Now to strategic decisions that have arrived at the tutorial on this campus. I am not so upset about canceling winter session as I am about how it was canceled. I do feel PCC was not smart and it was the only community college to have done so. Take College of the Canyons, for instance. They offered online classes in winter and began spring in early February. So much heart it could have been avoided. If we had sat down and communicated in PCC. Also, look at how many community colleges do have winter session. They must have come to very different conclusions about student success than we have. I agree that students who don't take the six-week winter session will forget things. How much do you think they're going to forget during the four-month summer break? And how about block scheduling? I still have no notion what this will mean to me.
Thirty seconds.
All right, well, I'll just finish with NCNs. Why I was forced to reexamine NCNs last year if it doesn't matter what I said. I was eight years old in 1982, which I believe is the year the administration wants to revert NCNs to. Where can I find these NCNs? Nowhere have I seen any pedagogical research that states 1982 is a benchmark for how many millennials we should have in the classroom. If anything, what I do now is that students are overwhelmed and are not prepared to succeed in college winter classes. A good place to end.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Manny Correa.
Danny, I would like to have Donna Munder, next.
Thank you. My name is Manny Correa, and for nearly thirty years I've been a member of the Pasadena City College community. In the mid-1980s, I was a student at PCC, and since 1991, I've been a voting member of several communities within the Pasadena area Community College District, including Temple City, where I currently reside as a constituent trustee Martin. I'd like to explain my reason for supporting PCC faculty's recent vote of no confidence in President Rocha. I'd first like to make clear that I came to my position without bias or prejudice. In fact, when President Rocha arrived at the college, I was on the side. I participated in the first SASE leadership retreat. I assisted the first-year experience design team in planning the first-year pathway, presenting to the board on that group's behalf in 2011. I was a member of the Pasadena Commitment Planning Committee, working with representatives from PCC, Cal State LA, and PUSD to improve attendance and success of PUSD students at Cal State and PCC. And I mention these activities to show that at one time I would not have supported a vote of no confidence in Dr. Rocha. So what changed? For me, the big turning point was the academic senate meeting of February 27, 2012. You know what happened there, I don't need to repeat it. But what Dr. Rocha actually showed me was an utter lack of appreciation and respect, not only for the academic senate, the institution of shared governance, but for every member of PCC's faculty. After that incident, I began to look at the administration with more critical eye, and instance after instance, I saw the same lack of appreciation and respect. When the administration rolled back the normal closing numbers that hardworking faculty successfully argued for in CNI with the approval of Vice President Miller and the CNI Chair Matt Jordan. When the administration chose to ignore the recommendations of the shared governance committee on the proposed realignment of the college. When Dr. Rocha persuaded you trustees to change the academic calendar mid-year, dismissing the calendar that had been developed and approved through shared governance. All of it, lack of appreciation and respect. In addition, the manner in which the administration pushes untimely important plan changes forward simply baffles me. The administration's approach, I can best describe as putting the cart before the horse, then circling back to clean up the mess the horse made. As administrators concentrated on cleaning up those messes, it seems nobody's left to guide the cart. Thus it rolls forward aimlessly without direction into uncharted territory. That so many members of the campus community, especially students, are confused by the developing calendar is evidence of its poor planning and lack of foresight in its establishment. That developing calendar includes several short-term, late-start online classes which were shoved into the dirt.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll jump to the end then. I should think, I hope you'll see that the fact that you are up here speaking to you are open-minded, reasonable, and they don't start from a position of us versus them. That's where we are now, that isn't where we started from. I'm curious how the board thinks will survive the upcoming accreditation visit when the accreditation team accurately gauges probably very quickly the lack of morale on campus, the absence of collegiality in operations, the heavy-handedness with the administration operates. And it's those questions that might lead you.
Thank you. Manny, Erin, who follow?
We're trying to get one or two ready, so.
Good evening. I'm Donna Mygen, part of the English Division, reading a letter on behalf of the faculty group committee. Members of the Board of Trustees, I've been a faculty member at PCC for the past fourteen years. I want to assure you that my vote of no confidence in Mark Rocha's administration has nothing to do with union negotiations. My vote of no confidence is based on years of trust-eroding decisions by the board, including the unilateral hiring of two inept presidents, the U building yasco for management of student needs and services, and the litigious, expensive retaliatory administration you have fostered over the years. Yes, I am frightened you or someone on the administration would retaliate against me for simply expressing my opinions. Thus, this is why I submitted this letter to you without a name. The chaos on campus has created a destructive atmosphere where I and my colleagues feel compelled to refocus our energy on campus-wide problems rather than on students in the classroom. This clearly does a disservice to our community. Ideally, the administration supports teachers as they strive to help students reach their student learning objectives. Instead, the poor management on this campus has led to a direct assault on SLOs and student success. When I view the March 13th Board of Trustees meeting, I can see that not all of you are on the same page as how to deal with the PCC community. I greatly appreciate John Martin's effort at setting a collaborative tone for the meeting, and then I had to chuckle along with him as Jeff Baum completely reversed the mood with this divisive commentary. I'm hoping that my letter to you will give those of you who are working for the good of PCC some acknowledgement that I'm grateful for the work you are doing. I'm also hoping that it will spark some dialogue among board members about the best approach to working with the faculty and other members of our community from this point onwards. I've been noticing a trend since Mark Rocha has come to campus. He takes credit for many things, Dean Prosser, except spew of any blame for anything negative on campus. In his recent news conferences with journalism students, he defended himself by saying, "The board makes the official decision," and that he merely makes recommendations. His attempt to deflect blame to you is yet another example of his unwillingness to accept responsibility for his actions. It's also reminding that you are the ultimate responsible for the situation at PCC. This is a dysfunctional campus because the shared governance process has been abandoned repeatedly by the board in the past, including when hiring presidents. Many of the faculty and staff feel like their time has been wasted.
Thirty seconds.
I'm also using Dan Myers' time. Linty administrative processes, only to have their suggestions ignored. You've made it clear through a variety of actions and interactions that you don't want to hear about problems or unwilling to address them. In my estimation, the only way this campus can heal is for those who have made mistakes own them. Once people are honest about the past, they can try to move forward. If there's a continual denial and inflection of blame, it will never get better. My advice to you is to embrace the information and the feelings of the faculty.
Thank you very much.
Students and staff. Thank you. Hopefully you'll get better.
Melanie, I want you to follow me.
I'm Mary Erin Crook. I've been an active member in the ad hoc committee that conducted the full-time faculty's vote of no confidence in President Rocha. I have struggled greatly over how to express my thoughts and feelings regarding the state of the college, and more specifically, in response to the board's official statement dated March 5, 2013, in which the faculty vote is not even acknowledged, leading me to address the current crisis as a taxpaying faculty member and a constituent of Dr. Mann. PCC has had a proud history of prudent planning and collaborative decision-making among various constituencies in the community. This practice is being dismantled to the detriment of the college, intensifying in the last two years with the full participation of the board. The extension of Dr. Rocha's contract with an increase in salary without any input from the broader campus community is but one shocking instance of the board's abandonment of fiscal prudence. During this time of great financial crisis in the state, the board created four new VP positions and numerous other managerial positions costing significant sums of tax dollars. We've had three HR people, lost our IT person, hired an in-house attorney to save legal expenses while continuing to retain an outside law firm. We've read mortifying headlines in the papers regarding our former facilities VP and his assistant. And this is just at the highest levels of management. While some heads have rebelled, my own is spinning from the pace at which other decisions have been made and unraveled. Buildings were going to be shuttered, then not. Retirees could continue as adjuncts, then not. Class sizes decreased, then not. The calendar called for winter, then it didn't. Such chaotic planning wastes time, energy, and ultimately, public resources. It seriously detracts from the education of students, which is what we would all rather be attending to. As a concerned longtime resident of the district and as a constituent, I urge you to consider the true motivations of the ninety-two percent of the voting faculty in no confidence, our deep-seated concern over the management of the chaos and mismanagement at PCC, and the entire community will benefit from your consideration of the reasons precipitating this crisis. Should Dr. Mann or any trustee have an interest in further discussion, my contract information is included. I have one further, very short message from a member of the Health Sciences.
Thank you very much.
Who said, "As a faculty member, I was not coerced in any way for my vote. The board needs to listen to the legitimate concerns of the faculty and staff and respect our attempt for effective self-governance, my vote of no confidence statements." Thank you.
Adnana Farah and Jane Hamanger.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Sanchez Horton. I'm from the English Division, and I have two short letters to read for you. The first letter, to the Pasadena community. My husband read part of the editorial of the Pasadena Sun to me last night. The accusations in the editorial make me feel ashamed to be a faculty member of PCC. Is this how anyone associated with PCC wants the community to perceive the faculty of this school? What kind of college can this be if the faculty is immature in reading? Whoever gave the reporter or reporters reason to come to such conclusions clearly did not have the best interest of the school and students in his or her heart. Personally, I have stopped teaching summer school and winter session for years because I feel those positions should go to the part-time faculty when class reduction due to the financial crisis in California has dramatically cut down employment opportunities for them. I have no personal gain whatsoever from the winter session. My opinion of this administration has nothing to do with money. My experience with this administration has been such that I withdrew all my efforts in shared governance activities and have avoided any function where I may come into contact with administrative personnel. My involvement here on campus has changed from frequently attending the Board of Trustees meetings to having not attended one in three years. My service to the community has been shifted entirely to direct service to the students and off-campus. The vote of no confidence without question demonstrated that I am not alone. I invite everyone in the community to stop and think. Can ninety percent of the faculty all be teaching winter, summer session, and thus cast their vote based on financial gain? This repeated shameless use of the media for self-interest and for destroying the reputation of this institute in the process is the last straw that broke my silence in the community for the past three years. This act alone should blast off an alarm like a nuclear bomb in anyone's mind that something is seriously amiss in the administration at PCC.
Three seconds.
Which comes off in the media as the victim of a reasonably greedy faculty. Indeed, enough is enough. Thank you for your attention respectfully, Lynn O'Connor. I'm sorry, I have no time for the second letter. Is that correct? Thank you.
My name is Adnana O'Connor. As a colleague of Suzy Ling, I would like to congratulate her too for her dedication to her students. I would also like to add that Professor Ling has been instrumental in the PCC annual pilgrimage to Manzanar, which about two hundred students participate in every year. Unfortunately, due to the cancellation of the winter intercession, it will no longer occur since it falls during final weekends, your final weekends, excuse me. Thus will deprive them of some very valuable study time. So as faculty, we decided that we cannot support this program anymore, even though it's very valuable. Let me also state that currently on this campus, there is a climate of dissension and fear, which is due to the many errors and unilateral decisions that have occurred by this administration. Let me emphasize that many people on this campus blame Dr. Rocha, not the board. The belief is that Dr. Rocha has either misrepresented the facts of the board or simply provided the board with wrong information. But we are here today, as we have done in the past, to provide the board with true state of affairs of this campus. It is my hope that you understand that we do not blame the board for the decisions that have been made since they were based on incorrect information. As such, it is our hope that now that you know the truth, you would reverse these unpopular decisions and right the wrongs. At our last meeting, there were lots of praise against our veterans, some of which had suffered severe disabilities. Had a leader of this country been provided with correct information and told the truth, these disabilities would have never occurred. Let me now begin by reading one of these letters, letters from some of our faculty. Dear members of the board, I hesitated to write a letter expressing my feelings about what had been occurring at PCC for fear of outing myself, but this issue is too important for me to remain silent. It is outrageous that there are those who think the faculty and our representatives are merely expressing our opposition to the president, his administration, and the board because we are unhappy with our contract negotiations. Here's the coming out part. I'm a faculty member who thinks that we should pay for part of our medical and that a change in California's pension system is necessary lest we become a larger version of Stotin. Having said that, I am still unhappy with the way the administration and board is treating us and our students. My personal story is not that interesting and certainly not tragic, but I am a teacher. I am teaching a reduced low this semester because of the sudden change in the spring calendar. My husband and I planned a five-week vacation starting January 1st.
Thirty seconds.
When the schedule changed, I was told I could teach twelve weeks starting February 4th or an eight-week schedule starting four weeks after that. I was supposed to return from my vacation on February 5th, so I had to return later to accommodate the twelve-week schedule. I'll skip to the end. Again, not much of a problem for me, but my students are struggling a bit more than under a sixteen-week schedule. I also teach an online business management class, and I've had half of the students drop already because they cannot keep up with the work under a twelve-week schedule. So please, do not tell me that I'm being selfish or that you will lament about my students. So let me leave you with this. What if the answer to every question was yes? Will you restore winter? Yes. Will you repeat shared, will you respect shared governance? Yes. Will you accept committee-approved normal closing numbers? Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, Jane Hamanger. This may not seem important to you, but it is to me. Professors of Pasadena City College, teach research, how to evaluate and present information. We trust that it is done as an intellectual endeavor. We trust that the research is complete. We tell students presenting information is both important as presenting support for ideas and also to teach ethical thinking. After the last board meeting, Dr. Roger can roger came to speak at the faculty senate meeting and continuously referred to an accreditation report handed out dated January 17, 2003. He kept saying that the school had been worse then than it is now, that they were under warning and things were so bad. Although I could not see the warning written within the letter handed out, it said that accreditation would be affirmed with the progress reported 2004. Why the president was referring to an accreditation done ten years ago when we had a more recent accreditation? I asked, why wasn't that used? His answer was that the later reports showed that everything was just as bad, just as broken. If so, why wasn't that before used as reference? I received no answers. So I did some research. The March 2009 visit of the team led by Jose Artest from Allen Handcock College had this statement. The team comments, Pasadena City College, were consistently functioning at a high level of overall student-supported teaching and learning. All operational areas of the college perform effectively. This does not sound like a college out of control. However, there was a warning, which is given at a first level to all schools when the board feels that it's necessary, to work on particular areas of concern. In March 2011, ACCJC reaffirmed accreditation and action was taken to remove the warning. There is an important aspect to this because everything must be looked at within the context. When I was on the commission, very few warnings went out each meeting. However, there is a change within the commission between 2003 and 2008. Seventy-five warnings went out to schools under ACCJC review. Only six went out in the middle states and six in the southern states, none in New England, north-central, and north-western. From June 2011 to June 2012.
Thirty seconds.
Twenty-four warnings, twenty-pervations, three show calls, and one termination layout. So everything has to be carefully looked at, carefully reviewed, carefully researched, and put into context. We have to know what is actually happening within context of the various time periods. Now, I did not find the letter that had this warning attached to it, but I believe in doing accurate research, and as an academic, I shall continue to search.
I'm reading a letter written by a colleague who was afraid to be here due to fear of humiliation. Dear members of the board, one thing that has been bothering me since the last board meeting is how Mr. Rocha implied that PCC is going through presidents faster than vice presidents. If someone doesn't know PCC's history, one would think this college was very unstable before Mr. Rocha saved us from ourselves. In fact, four presidents in four years is not all what it sounds like. Mr. Rocha is referring to Presidents Costler, Perfumo, Sugimoto, and himself. President Costler was here for many years and ran a tight but convivial ship. There were no votes of no confidence under his tenure. President Perfumo was here such a short time it can hardly be marked at all.
President Perfumo was here such a short time it can hardly be marked at all. The Board recognized a mistake in hiring her, and she was gone shortly afterwards. President Sugimoto took over in our time of need, and we would have kept her if that is what she had wanted. Instead, we got stuck with someone that most on campus already knew was bad news. The Board did not heed our warnings about Mark Rocha. I would like to know if Mark Rocha and his wife are still under investigation from his previous place of employment. The least the Board could have done was Google his name and found out that there were many unanswered questions about his leadership at his previous college. I would also like to add that yes, obviously, we do want a good president. The campus has spoken loudly and clearly, both the president, both students and faculty, and two votes of no confidence in Mark Rocha. I am pleading with the Board to listen to us before we lose all of our Prop 30 money, our accreditation, and our dignity. We have gone from being a first-class college to one where faculty and students are afraid of and intimidated by Mark Rocha and his administration. To sum up, just as Mark Rocha gives his version of events to the Board behind closed doors, others are giving theirs to Board members as well. The Board is being informed of what the climate of this campus is really like. It is very different from Mark Rocha's reality. The veneer with which Mark Rocha polishes his version to the Board is cracking. The truth of how he is damaging this campus will come to light. The Board will not be forever fooled by Mark Rocha. Our campus community knows it and will continue to fight until the wrong is righted. Unsigned.
My name is Roberta Tragars. I live in Pasadena. I was adjunct faculty at PCC from spring 1997 to spring 2000. I have been tenured faculty at San Diego County College for the past 13 years. I am here to read a statement written by Margaret Manson, retired Vice President of the Academic Affairs and Professor at San Diego County College. Ms. Manson lives out of state. Concerning President Mark Rocha, I have read with both interest and concern the supporting documentation for the proposed vote of no confidence for Mark Rocha. I can speak to his leadership style, as I experienced it, and his willful disregard of shared governance at SCC. Mark was the first college president hired after SCC became a separate college within the Rancho San Diego Community College District. I was the Vice President of Academic Affairs at that time and served as a member of the Hiring Committee. Even though Mark had no California community college experience, he was an impressive candidate. I was not a candidate for this position and assured Mark, when he was hired, that I would do everything I could to ensure his success.
I just wanted to make sure before this one kind of gets too big. We're not going to get personal here in this, right? This is going to be professional, right?
Absolutely, and it's.
Thank you. I want to make sure we're not getting personal.
I'm not exactly sure what you mean by that, but I'm reading this paper by Margaret Manson.
I understand, and I want to make sure that, I understand you can have a disagreement with the superintendent, and there can be a level of, we didn't like this action or this decision, but I don't want it to get to a personal level in our civil discussion that we're having here today. So you know what you're about to read, I'm going to ask you to carefully screen for that.
Okay. As a longtime district employee initially hired in 1979, I was well versed in the development and intent of AB 1725. However, within a very short period of time, it became clear that Mark had no intent of sharing college governance with any other constituent groups as required or had historically been the case in SCC. In reviewing documents from the SCC Academic Senate at that time, it is clear that the SCC faculty also experienced intimidation and, in their words, were treated in a condescending manner, not as colleagues nor as staff, with valid historical viewpoints. I certainly knew this to be true when Mark had open battles with faculty at the Academic Senate. His reports to me following such encounters were that he had been belly bumping and that he never stepped off the sidewalk for anyone. Mark seemed to enjoy the combative approach. On more than one occasion, he came to me to complain about individual faculty members who did not respect him as president. I personally experienced Mark's anger and outrage.
Thirty seconds.
When, after an especially difficult encounter with a family member.
And I did add time, so, thirty seconds.
He came into my office, shut the door, and demanded to know what I had done to cause this faculty member to treat him in such a disrespectful way since he was the college president. I explained to him at the time that the problem was not mine, and that in battling with faculty, he was creating serious problems that would make it more and more difficult for the new college to function effectively. Although I hoped to continue in my administrative position, it became increasingly clear that I could not work for Mark, and I reluctantly decided to exercise my retreat rights to the classroom. After I made this very tough decision, Mark was furious with me and highly concerned about how this would make him look. In the many years I worked for the district, having had many different positions and levels of responsibility, I have never worked for a more unscrupulous or unethical administrator. When Mark told me early on that his approach was that this is what we tell the faculty, but this is what we really do, I knew we were not a well-matched administrative team. I hoped that somewhere along the way, he would have learned to moderate behavior, operate with honesty and transparency, and recognize that always.
This is asking you to bring it.
Honestly considered in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Michelson, and I've seen a copy of that letter. Maybe I could just finish up what she was saying and continue the other letters that I'm supposed to be reading. In the many years I worked for the district, having had many different positions and levels of responsibility, I had never worked for a more unscrupulous, oh, sorry. Let's see. While I hope some of this is true, concerns expressed by the PCC faculty seem very familiar and are consistent with my own experiences. When PCC was hiring a new president, I received a call from someone at the college. I spoke to the caller about what I perceived as Mark's anger problem, his treatment of women, as I in my SCC college experienced it, and explained I still have my notes and documents that clearly indicate many of the problems of his presidency. When it became apparent that Mark was going to be hired, my advice to the caller was eyes wide open is the best approach. I also remember feeling badly for PCC and all those connected with this well-respected college. When my former colleagues contacted me about faculty concerns at PCC, I was sorry but not surprised. That's the end of that letter. I have two other letters. To the Board and Trustees, this is unsigned. The Educational Master Plan at PCC clearly states that two of its goals are to, quote, "promote trust and transparency in the decision-making at all levels," end quote, and, quote, "to support students effectively and efficiently in and out of the classroom." Whatever one's opinion of the current campus administration, the recent vote of no confidence by faculty and students is a clear demonstration that neither of these EMP goals is being met sufficiently. Please help to improve the situation at PCC. Please help the faculty to get to know you, and please, try to get to know the faculty. Perhaps better lines of communication between the faculty and the Board will help ameliorate this situation. It certainly can't hurt. Unsigned. This last letter is written by Erica Cantanese. To the Board, it is upsetting to me that something so simple has turned into such chaos. I just bailed on teaching my summer session class because of ridiculous renaming of sessions. I requested to teach the first summer session, which intuitively starts at the beginning of summer when spring ends. I just found out that by requesting first summer session, I was actually requesting what would normally be considered second summer session because your first summer session was renamed extended spring. Are you kidding me? I support shared governance and the work with the Calendar Committee. I lack confidence in our current administrative condition. And now, I'm super bugged that I won't have the income our family planned out because I'm unavailable for the renamed session.
Thirty seconds.
Our sincerely Erica Cantanese, aquaponics leadership project manager, biology, natural sciences division. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lydia Gutierrez, and I am not on the faculty staff. I am here to talk about a new movie called 42, about Jackie Robinson. I am a public school teacher, and I teach about Jackie Robinson and the importance he has made in our country, and especially for this state and for this college. But I was greatly disappointed in February to read an article about one of your professors, Professor Hugo Suarez, who made a comment that I find very offensive, and this was his comment. I think, Jan, what is this man's name? James Dean is one of our best-known famous alum. More of my students know who he is than they do Jackie Robinson. I was on the executive board of the NWC team. This is very offensive to me. I've heard that this man would make this comment to compare a pornography man to Jackie Robinson and to highlight this other man over Jackie Robinson's accomplishments. I am demanding an apology, a formal apology, from his staff, from this particular professor as a press release. I am putting here $10 for his ticket to go see the movie if he does not take the opportunity to see it and what the window offering here. I give him one week. If I do not hear of any press release, I will take action. Thank you.
Ma'am, just a second, please, though. Thank you. I appreciate you coming. When he made those comments, he obviously was speaking as an individual and not.
He spoke it on PCC grounds. Let me say this. We have, the African-American is the lowest performing throughout the nation, especially for this state. LAUSD has a 50 percent drop-off rate. One in 20 will make it through college. As you talk about the Hispanic, this isn't bad right now. 400 years the African-American community has been here, and we have to fight to make sure they are given an opportunity. And I will not accept this man on this campus making that statement. I am demanding a full apology. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My name is Preston Rose, and I'm a part-time faculty member here at PCC and the Vice President of the Faculty Association. In the discussion of the vote of no confidence, Dr. Rocha suggested that the vote of no confidence was invalid because adjunct faculty had not received ballots. The truth is that part-time faculty at PCC take a great risk whenever they express their opinions, and I would like to, I would like to remind the Board that the 650 or more part-time faculty at PCC can be dismissed at any time without cause, and they have no job security. I would like to suggest that when part-time faculty have job security at PCC, they will be glad to express their opinion on any, any subject, including the conduct of the administration, the Board, or Dr. Rocha. Thank you.
That brings public comment on non-agenda items to close, and we are going to begin our joint meeting.